Colomer.
Here.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Koenig.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
I'd like to ask everybody in attendance, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in honor of our trips. Thank you. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda, a routine in nature we passed with one vote of the council. Should any member of the council or the audience wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration, please say so now and it will be removed and considered following the approval of the remaining consent items. Consent items include minutes from the council meeting on September eighth, two thousand twenty-five, payroll for the pay period ending September sixth, an amount of two hundred seventy-one thousand seventy-five dollars and forty-six cents, staff reports, and BAC reports. Do we have motion to approve consent agenda items?
So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Koenig.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. Next, we have approval of bills for September twenty-second, an amount of two hundred forty-five thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and forty cents. Do we have motion to approve payment of the bills?
So moved. Second.
And any discussion?
I did have one. Intech Services, it looked like we had blown fuses, a thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars, seven hundred twenty-five dollars, and then the AC not cooling. Is this our new AC that we just had put in a couple of years ago?
Yes, I believe that was all from a lightning strike that hit the top of the building and hit and caused a lot of issues.
Okay, so do we get insurance claim, or do we have anything that's gonna help reimburse us if lightning struck it?
We should be able to submit it to insurance.
Okay, okay. So all these then should be able to be recouped? Because that's a substantial amount of money for the AC and fuses.
Any else?
Yeah, I suppose, so we do have Hutchinson here to talk on a separate issue, but one of the things here, the SS four A grant application, is this for a future grant application, or the one that we were unsuccessful for for this year, for this round? What is this charge specifically for?
I believe it's for the Safe Streets For All grant for extending the look at the corridor study.
But we were unsuccessful in that, correct?
I don't believe so.
In extending it? I was under the impression that this particular, like, the grant application this year was to extend it, and that portion of it wasn't picked up. So I'm just wondering, I'm always trying to drill down on these engineering fees and understanding what we're getting for what we're paying, so we know where the value is.
I believe you're thinking of the Safe Streets For All grant?
Okay.
So is this the Streetscape grant?
No, this is the corridor study to look at the alignment or realignment or how thirty-four and seventy-eight, thirty-two, is that correct?
Um, yeah. As I understand it, now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, you're good. So as I understand it, I think some of the ones you were talking about that you weren't successful for this last round was ITAP. I think you pursued an ITAP grant application. This SS four A, that's Safe Streets For All, I think you actually just submitted that. That deadline was just.
Yeah, I don't know anything that it's been.
And we helped put some exhibits and things together for that pursuit, just like right now we're helping Kathleen with some for the currents, Safe Routes For All grant, and that, that will close in October.
So have we been provided, I guess, and maybe, maybe I'm just not recalling, but have we been given any presentation on what this grant was for, or what the effort was for this?
Or any background for it?
Yes.
So I apologize, we, we do, I mean, we have a lot of street efforts going on.
That's the one, so the first Safe Streets For All grant was the metro-wide, it was musketeen, Kiwanee and the Quad Cities, and you adopted the Safe Streets For All plan. One of the recommendations in that plan was that we then come back and do corridor studies and see if there are objects that are too close to the road or need moved back, or if we need to change the alignment of things.
Okay, I'll go back and reread those, those minutes, because I believe our adoption of the Safe Streets For All was more like, because I specifically asked if it came with any monetary obligation for the city, and it was more of a, yes, we, we support safe street initiatives, and we're behind that as a concept, but not necessarily approving expenditures moving forward for studies. Because it's not clear to me, and so maybe, maybe would you, could, could we, you know, get some more information on just exactly what this initiative is for and what we're pursuing here? Because I'm continually trying to wrap, at least my mind, around what is our comprehensive plan? Where are we going? What are we trying to do? And not just chasing everything that's out there, but, but making sure that the money's going towards actionable things. And then just to follow on that next one, Hutchinson charges, well, that Streetscape construction, assuming that that's downtown. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, so just once again, if you wouldn't mind, James, adding some specificity, since we do have about three.
Different.
Or four different efforts with Hutchinson, and we just can't have Hutchinson as a line item.
Do they each have a project number or anything like that?
Not on the invoice that's discernible. We need to, we need to do a better job at asking for.
Pro itemized.
More detail on the invoices that we've received in the past.
So even just a little itemization that this is for this, this is for this.
For some of the motor fuel initiatives, we get clear details for those. For things like these, we have to do a better job and give more detail.
This is the third meeting that we've had the same comment, so please find a solution. I don't want to continue to make this comment. We have, this is a lot of money we're pushing out for engineering. We have to be able to discern where that money's going.
It's been discussed during the department meetings.
Thank you. Yeah, those were the two.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Koenig.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
We will move on to public comments. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council regarding anything that is not on the agenda, please step up to the microphone and state your name. And please bear in mind that there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. And please speak loudly so that members listening from home are able to hear what you have to say. No public comments, and we will move to the next agenda item. We have a swearing in, new fireman. Mr. Harker, come on up.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Tyler Harker.
I, Tyler Harker.
Having been hired to the position of fireman.
Having to be hired for the position of fireman.
In and for the city of Kiwanee.
In and for the city of Kiwanee.
And the county of Henry.
And the county of Henry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of firemen of the city of Kiwanee.
Of firemen of the city of Kiwanee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You ain't getting away that quick.
Okay, we will move on to new business. We will open up with a public hearing on appropriations. State law requires a public hearing for any and all residents wishing to offer an opinion on the subject of appropriations. In layman's terms, this subject matter will set the maximum expenditure amount for each line in the budget for the fiscal year. So our public hearing is now open. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on appropriations, if you've taken the time to look at it.
Evening, Joel Hossi, Six Twenty Wheeler. I just had a couple of quick questions. It says here, it's supposed to be, this is supposed to be taken care of in the first quarter of each fiscal year, but for past that, it says that it's supposed to be, public hearing is supposed to be, notice was supposed to be given at least ten days prior to the meeting, and if it was, where was it done, so on, that's all.
I can answer that. The notice was published in the most available local newspaper that we had, which is currently in Iowa, but it's distributed in Kiwanee. The notice was also provided in the four-year and on the website in the finance department section. So in those three places, the notice was given. We were passed at three quarters, or the first quarter, because we had to give the notice and the budget was passed in August, which was just after, so because we had to wait that ten days after August twenty-sixth, it pushed it to now. So that's why we were a little late on the appropriations.
And with, with the, the notice, would it be better to be on the front page? Because not too many people are gonna dig all the way to the financial section.
Yeah, understood. There's a cost involved doing that, and then there's discernment in the papers to whether or not they will put it on the front page.
They've done it on the website.
Oh, on the front page, okay.
Joel, I like that. I was actually gonna ask that we consider, so if, if our residents aren't aware, you can go to our website and sign up for email alerts. So every time the city posts a news, a new news link, or a, or the city council packet comes out, or a bid posting, you can sign up for those to be emailed to you when they come out. I know we've discussed other ways to get information to our residents. So I was gonna ask that we do a news posting when we do things like this. I know that the newspaper is by statute the legal requirement, but kind of in a nod to Joel here, like, who subscribes to the Quad City newspaper? So, so anyway, if we could do that, or maybe consider that, that would be great.
There also a text thread that goes out, or?
Yes.
No?
But you can sign up for text or email notification.
So they don't have to, that was my question, so they can get a text instead of.
I can get it too.
Yes.
And it just says this page has been updated and you do the direct link.
Correct, yep, but some people prefer texts.
Anybody else like to address the council on this subject matter? Councilmembers have any remarks, comments, other than what was already said?
Not, not really, other than to point out, in the revenue brief this past week at the Municipal League Conference, we were briefed that Illinois State revenue was about fifteen to eighteen percent below projections. And I'm just wondering, James, are you getting fed that same information? And, and as we've approved the budget and these appropriations, is, are those lower projections for revenue sharing from the state to the municipalities being factored in to this appropriations? Or is this one linked more on the assumptions we were making when we approved the budget?
Yeah, they are linked to the prior assumptions when we approved the budget. And I don't wanna speak out of turn when it comes to how much the state receives from the cities versus any federal funds that might constrain some, what individual cities receive. I don't know the correlation to that, and I don't know that that's been specifically given. So to that extent, there hasn't been a factor in, in of revenue reductions. However, when we see the budgets come out, that's something we can take note of. We just had our first quarter session for the department heads, so you should be getting a first quarter look soon.
Yep.
And that might help us see if there's any headwinds that we need to be aware of.
So we just need to be that much more diligent in tracking that, so.
When do we close our month end? Is it by the tenth? Is it by the tenth, is it fifteenth, is it thirtieth? Is there a deadline that we have?
I think, yeah, that's a traditional, but right now, the focus really is to get the cities' financials in line with the audit, so that when we do portray the monthly financial reports, they're consistent with what the audit says. So that's the goal right now. So the financial reports are available. They're not necessarily to the standard that I would like in terms of being consistent with what the audited financial report would be from last year into this year, it's kind of an ounce, but that's the goal for this year. So to the extent that, that information is needed, it's readily available on your request.
Yeah, I would just like to see us eventually get to a point where we can look month to month instead of quarter, because sometimes quarterly could be not beneficial to some, some spending or things that we, you know, have out of line, and being able to have a better snapshot on it and pushing that information out.
Always give you preliminary reports, let's say preliminary closure.
Yeah.
And so that you have that so you can see what the indicators are.
Yeah, for sure.
Those are always available.
Yes.
What would be helpful in my mind would be a dashboard trend line. So we, we approved a budget that had roughly been a spend down, it was three million dollars, expenditures over revenues. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, we know where we started. We know where we approved to roughly go with a commitment to watch spending in between. But can you just, I mean, even graph out some expenditure or some revenues, and make, and so we can track a trend line and expenditures and track a trend line, so we can dashboard look at it and know where we need to dig in and help, help us stay on track?
Absolutely, yeah, that's a good request.
I think that would help us dramatically, because, I mean, I listen to a couple of podcasts, but a lot of the financial sector right now is a little bit off, because people have front-loaded the tariffs, and now that those are kind of evening out, they're seeing a little bit less. So I want to make sure that we're ahead of some of our revenues, some of our, I know jobs are down, things like that. So I just want to make sure that we have a true grasp on our financials, because the, the, it's just not clear right now, because of a lot of the stuff going on.
And obviously, the earlier we make course corrections, the smaller course correction we need to make.
Correct, and then we can cut it off before it gets too out of control.
Yeah, this, this goes back to some of the work sessions that you had mentioned earlier, and having that communication up front, so that you have what you need.
Yeah, we just want, we just want to help you help us, you know?
This is good communication, I tell you. Question what you want.
Thanks.
One more time, anybody from the audience have anything they'd like to add, any questions? Okay, we will close the public hearing. We'll move on to item B, bill number two-five dash eight-seven, ordinance established appropriations for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Having closed the public hearing on appropriations, we will now vote on appropriations for the fiscal year. We have a motion.
So moved. Second.
And any discussion? Pretty much covered it in the open meeting. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Koenig.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Item C, bill number two-five dash eight-eight, ordinance implementing a non-home rule municipal retailer's occupation tax and non-home rule municipal service occupation tax for the city of Kiwanee. There was a recent change by state legislators, legislators authorizing cities to enact additional sales tax for infrastructure improvements. This ordinance have passed will add a one-half cent sales tax known as the non-home rule municipal retailer's occupation tax. The additional revenues generated by this sales tax would be used by ordinance for city streets and roads, sidewalks, and stormwater drainage and retention facilities. What you see on your sales tax receipt is an increase of fifty cents for every one hundred dollars spent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And any discussion before we do have a presentation as well? Anything you'd like to say before the presentation?
Just, just to reiterate that, how important I personally feel it is that we have an actionable and a well-defined plan of what we are going to do and how we are going to restrict the employment of these funds if we do indeed pass this. This is a half, a half a cent, yes, but it will take our sales tax from eight and a quarter to eight and three-quarters, which I have had meetings with a couple of different businessmen today in our, in our local community that will be impacted on, by this. And, and this will push us near the top of any competing community around here in terms of sales tax. So I understand what the potential benefits of this are, but I just think it's continuing to ask a lot of our residents, and we need to make sure, like what we're doing here, that we have not an idea of a plan, but a well-articulated plan of what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it before we start collecting these funds.
I think also on top of that, once we get that plan, we set it forth, then we issue the correct bonds and start working and get things done right now while we're collecting the revenues over time, so that they're not seeing this, we're fixing a street here, a street there, as we're generating the revenues, but we can get this done in a couple, few years, like we talked about before, when, or engineering, I can't remember his name, put everything together, right when I got on the council last time. So I would like to see us take those steps, so that way they're seeing something for what they're paying into it. And other people who've come to our community and spend, they're actually helping us with our roads too, so.
JD.
Thanks, Romans. So could you guys hear me by just being right here?
Yeah.
In the audience?
Now, I'll just kick you over here. Yeah, go ahead, move over where we need it.
The whole stand will move.
Whatever's easiest for you.
That way you're not holding a mic, maybe?
Okay, so my name's JD Schulte from Hutchinson Engineering, you can hear me all right? And I've been working with you folks on, on some of your, like, transportation-related initiatives. And so as I talked to your administrator, and we kind of went back and forth, and that you talked about earlier in the year when you became, I guess, your city engineer thing for life question, I think that's kind of how we're framed up. You know, the goal is to put together your comprehensive pavement condition index scoring to kind of give you that playbook for your, for your transportation priorities. And so, and I know I touched on it a little bit, and one time I was here talking to you before, but I, I wanted to ask, I asked Gary when there was an opportunity, when I could come back and talk to you a little more, and he, he told me if I could come this Monday night, then you guys could be discussing something more, you know, a little bigger, more comprehensive, you know, and that, and he thought the time would be good, so, so that's why I'm here. And I hadn't necessarily, I guess, rehearsed anything, but I, I put some slides together today to kind of make sure that I hit some topics that I want to talk to you about, because, you know, some of this, maybe some of the approach, and just being conversational about this, some of you around, were in you around here when Scott Eaton was your city engineer. Okay, so Scott worked for me, he was my city engineer when I was public works director, I worked with him for nineteen years. I can't imagine, he was here very long, you didn't hear him talk about the curve of death. So that's, that's kind of what I want to talk about tonight, because some of that philosophy, you know, that used to be works first, isn't necessarily how best practices approach, you know, street improvements. And so, you know, looking at your corporate limits, and, you know, obviously you've got some FAU, you've got some state routes, and then you've got some local roads that are under the state jurisdiction for funding. So you've got some, some different components in there, but, but the streets that are under your purview and your responsibility for maintenance and repair, looks like you got right about two hundred million miles. Does that seem to be close to what you guys.
Yes.
Have identified, so. And just, you know, going out and looking at your website, looking at kind of how you guys, you know, have approached some of that in the past, it looks, it looks like you kind of would sweep through the community by quadrants. I mean, you go through, kind of look at, you know, where some of the different maintenance improvement areas, you know, and that, what you could do, that sand seal, I think some people call a slurry seal, and that you, you're here to term different things in different areas. But basically what it does is rather than go see, you see some of those rural roads where, you know, they got the cracks, where they've, you know, ground them out, sealed them, you know, and that, and you see that they're, you know, going through that asphalt surface, trying to keep that moisture from getting underneath the roadway surface. This slurry seal or that sand seal kind of does that in a, in a more broadcast way, I guess, in that sense.
JD, can you emphasize the difference between sand seal and chip seal? And the most recent effort that we undertook a year ago in the southeast quadrant of the city? Was that sand seal?
So as I understand it, that was sand seal, I'm not completely familiar with it, you may have done some.
Because they did some pre-milling of about an inch or two.
Okay, so in areas like that, I'm gonna say that, that was probably, it might have been brought a chip seal over the top, which is, it's a, it's a different aggregate, you know, the sand seal is literally just a, you know, just a sand. It's, it's put in with that emulsion, and that emulsion's usually pretty thin. If you do, like, seal coat, you know, and that, that's, that's gonna have a, it's, it's gonna have somewhat of a layer to it, and you can build that up, you know, you know, three or four layers of seal coat like that is the equivalent, you know, of kind of an asphalt overlay. So I don't know, I don't know what you did.
We should think of sand, when we hear anything seal, sand seal or chip seal, this is a maintenance evolution.
Correct, correct, those are, those are maintenance activities.
This is not, this is not a, we should not think of this as we have renewed that surface. We have not renewed that road.
Uh, no.
We've extended the life, we have not reset the life.
You've extended the life. You've, you've saved it from, you know, that moisture exposure and that. Now, there's some advanced work, there's some flyover you can do before you do that. So it sounds like you were talking about some milling and some other things. So you can, you can take away and improve rideability and do some other things with that advanced work that you do, but the, the, the biggest value that comes from those treatments is, is um, is protecting that from that moisture getting underneath there and then that freezing fall cycle going through, causing, you know, all that.
Last question, I'll ask on sand seal and chip seal. Um, when your company provides us an assessment of the surface index, the condition index, um, will you also provide us recommendation on appropriate use? Cause sometimes there is a, there is a, this is a certified application, but perhaps the certified application is used in the incorrect location.
Yeah, yeah, so I think, I think I'll get to some of that as we talk through this, because I think you get, um, and we can get as comprehensive and as detailed as, as you want. I guess I, I brought some different documents.
Awesome. I just wanted to see how far we were gonna go in the condition versus the, versus the uh, execution.
Okay, okay. But stop any, any time I'm going along here, cause I um, I'll be the guidance.
Thank you. Appreciate it, JD.
Okay, so what we've been talking about with uh, the city is doing this pavement condition index inspection or this index scoring and um, not to just read from the slide, but basically this provides a standardized objective metric for assessing pavement conditions, reducing subjectivity, making decisions on a more consistent basis. Um, agencies can use this detailed information, it's distress data basically on the, on the streets and informs the PCI to choose the most suitable repair method for each specific road section. So I think that's what you're asking about. And, and this is just a snapshot that I took from one that we did for a client here. Last fall. So what we have talked to your administration about and that is that we'll come in, we'll perform all the field investigations on these two hundred ninety miles that you have. The roads will be driven systematically rated in accordance with the AGI pavement distress guide. Now, our guide, and I've got it loaded on here, but it's based off IDOT's fifty-nine page guide that they have. Now, this is a guide that IDOT's put together and they followed along it for years. They have recently, when I say recently, probably since about twenty nineteen, you'll see that they've gone out and started using some of this high-tech stuff. Kathleen and I, we applied for a grant last year to try and see if we could land some money for Kiwanee to bring in one of these high-tech, you know, assessment things. And uh, don't, don't think, I don't know where the scoring fell short, but as, I haven't heard back from Kathleen, but I don't think I funded for that. Um, but those are um, there's a lot of communities that do that, but you gotta have a lot of financial bandwidth to do that. IDOT's been doing it in some areas. This is a, this is their system that they've used for decades, you know, and that, and that's what ours is based on. But it includes the distress condition and then there's two different matrices that you use for concrete and then for by two minutes payments, or by two minutes ones, the ones that you could talk about, or, you know, you've got that flexible surface. So, um, basically, and, and this where I guess I got ahead of myself on IDOT's history, they have always gone about a worst first methodology. Uh, pavements in the forest are low to fair condition, the worst ones receive priority for funding and repairs. Those were often very costly and very time-consuming projects. Um, as resources became increasingly limited, this methodology allowed a little margin for funding maintenance and preservation treatments that would prevent pavement in good condition from deteriorating to a worse condition. So that's where IDOT, I can say they, you know, found a way to try in some of their areas, put more technology in place to try and get to work, you know, comprehensive survey results so they could go out in a, in a broader scale and try and substantiate. Because you know, I mean, the, the vocal majority are, are gonna question why you're not going after the streets that have the worst rideability and the worst visible condition, you know, and that first.
We're gonna have more complexity than that.
That's what I was gonna ask, cause.
As we're folding in the CMT portion of this.
Correct, and I, I get into that too, because Scott and I have had, uh, so Scott Displener is kind of your rep that works with you guys from CMT and Scott and I have, we work together on a lot of different projects. And we talked this recently, this last Thursday, about this one specifically, so making sure that we're all on the same timeline for, for tying together all our analysis, so.
But the, the worst of first, when, if that's their way of maintaining and, and their methodology of going poor conditions, receive funding and repairs, isn't that counterintuitive? Because at some point those good or excellent are gonna get in that poor condition instead of spending a little bit of money and making that money stretch further, they could have taken care of some of that along with some of the worst, right?
And that's what they're doing. So I think when you see with IDOT, so like I said, twenty nineteen, they actually came out publicly and started broadcasting their new strategy.
Okay.
Still about, about eighty percent, I think, of their funding, and it probably varies from year to year, but I think they go into the budget year with the anticipation, put about eighty percent in that repair work and about twenty percent of those funding dollars going towards that, that maintenance work.
Yeah.
Let's go extend the useful life of those pavements that are out there and haven't fallen over that curve.
Yeah.
So.
Are we gonna be, when, I know it's probably a couple slides away, I'm jumping the gun, are we gonna be looking at that comprehensively the way IDOT does it? So that we're not spending more money than we have to for maintaining and doing that eighty-twenty, you know?
That's what I'm with, that's what I'm with.
Okay, good. Sorry, I probably get ahead of you.
So, no, that's all right. So this basically here, just the biggest, um, bigger, I guess, it's not any bigger, but this is, yeah, these are the different ratings and um, actually maybe, let me just go to the next slide. Yeah, so this is maybe gives you a little indication. So this is an actual screenshot that I took uh, from one that we've done. If you guys are familiar with that Joliet area, uh, Joliet Township is, you know, just as big now as, as, uh, not, that's not true. Joliet Township is probably just a little bit smaller than Kiwanee for actual lane miles, but it's still a township jurisdiction up there because they, they've grown so rapidly outside the corporate limits. But uh, so like this is an example that I took as a screenshot. And you can see in this small little residential area, they got four different scoring matrices because of, you know, different conditions that are, so you have to get down to that uh, very mind-level because some of those, you know, and that are in a, you know, obviously a excellent condition, you know, in, in the higher scoring areas and some of them are lower. The um, hang on, I put a sheet here, I didn't put this in this presentation, but I'll, but I'll read this to you so it kind of tells you how this, how this comes in and comes together is that uh, AGI, when we perform these field investig- investigations, we would do this on all your local roads, um, everything that's under the, the city of Kiwanee's jurisdiction. The roads will be driven and systematically rated based on the pavement distress guide. And I've got a guide, we can pop it up here and I'll kind of show you guys how it, it layers down into all the different by two minutes and concrete conditions. Um, our guy's based on IDOT's manual that I told you about, their rating system that includes distress conditions for both concrete and by two minutes. Scores given by inspectors are averaged to determine the final score. If the inspectors have a rating that varies more than one half a point between then and initial rating, they will rerate that section of roadway again for concurrent section, go out, revisit it, figure out where they weren't in alignment. Um, the methodology will help provide ratings that are subjected to inspector experience that get consistent in the methodology. All distresses, log miles, and ratings are then tabulated and categorized for analysis. And then when they're categorized, they'll put into these, and I've got a, I think I put a screenshot up here. And then you can't read this, but again, I've got, I've got an attachment to this, but you'll end up with layer after layer of these, you know, different streets. And they break it down, I mean, you saw on that map, and this is, you know, nine hundred, just one tenth of a mile on this one street, um, colors, and I make sure this, this is more avenue. I made sure I got a page in here that had more avenue on it, but um, and here, but it talks about, you know, these are all different, these, these different codes here are all the different things that are going on on a different street, whether it's, you know, ravelling or whatever. These are all, bring up that other um, document so you can see it. But, you know, there may be two tenths of a mile that's in that condition, and a tenth of a mile that's under this condition. And these are the, the reviewer's scores and the date they did it. And then this is that final rating that comes down that ties it in to those different condition levels.
JD, one second. In, in this analysis of the condition index, what I haven't yet heard, I've been trying to listen for, any assessment of the structural state of the road and perhaps like one road may have an acceptable condition rating, however, its grade is inappropriate in relation to our baseline elevation. And so then water evacuation is inappropriate, or there's pooling and it doesn't make it to the gutter?
Yeah, so all those different codes on here all correlate. So all these are like right here, T one, T three, Q one, S two, V one, L two, U two, U three. Those are all in that deeper di- I'll bring that document up so you can see that. And that's all in this analysis.
So it is folded in there.
You've got a neighborhood I was in last week that would be an ideal candidate for a sand seal. The problem is, is over the years, it looks like your ditches were drained right, it's all sealed in. And I told Gary, um, I can't in good conscience give you a recommendation to go do that because you gotta take care of your drainage problems.
You don't know how happy I am to hear you say that.
But just, you know, just me driving through there just says, yeah, you, you've got flyover, you've got advanced work to do before you can go out and do that maintenance work. But you can't let that go on forever, or it's gonna get in a deteriorated state, because again, that moisture's gonna get under there. It's, it's making its own path right now because you've got crested culverts and, and that water is gonna take that path on these positions. So, yeah, so this is, this is very important, um, and like I said, it ties back to a and I don't wanna jump out of this because I have a hard time getting this to.
Yeah, no problem. You, you answered my question, thank you.
Okay, I'll get through this and then I'll jump to those and, and, and throw that up. But the um, so this is where, like I say, you've probably seen this, something similar to this before than when Scott was here, or if you, if you have. But basically, this is, this is what we're talking about is, is those streets come out of it, they're, they're gonna fall into a category where, yeah, joint sealing, cleaning, that slurry seal, those kind of, those kind of uh, maintenance products will, will buy you some time and they'll extend out this, this, this curve. But once you start falling over this, if you, if you aren't getting on those and if you guys aren't, you know, doing your tar and doing, you know, staying religious on your maintenance, then you're gonna, you're gonna get to this point and then it's just a matter of, okay, what do we do to try and maintain uh, rideability and, and whatever, and then obviously down in here. Now, the other component that we've got going on, and this is where, you know, I wanna, I, I wanna read this here and then jump to the next screen. But maintaining good pavement in acceptable condition by doing the right treatments at the right time, balanced with resurfacing and reconstruction, that's what's gonna be recommended, what comes from us. But what, that's gonna have to be, that's gonna have to be tied to is that the report results will have to be integrated with condition assessments and party recommendations from the other infrastructure areas. And that's what I've been talking to Scott Displener about. Because you're gonna have to develop a comprehensive strategy for all your capital improvements. Our PCI score is only gonna be a small percentage of what you got, because you're gonna have water, you're gonna have sanitary, you're gonna have storm sewer, you're gonna have to bring all those in and then more collectively kind of look at where your financial bandwidth is and for the different things. Because what you're gonna find a lot of these areas here is the utilities underneath are gonna drive these projects. And then, and it doesn't come easy. I mean, and, you know, as public works director, I would put this stuff together and I didn't realize how hard Gary's job was until I spent three down, three years down there as administrator, I had to balance all of this because then I had to bring all the funding mechanisms in and try and figure out how to make that come together, you know, whether it's for debt service and, you know, which one of these utilities could afford the debt service, which ones couldn't, and what's, you know, driving all that. So this is, I know this is gonna get a lot more complex and you guys are gonna have to sit here and make a lot of decisions, but, you know, we will bring our part into this equation and hopefully these other ones will come in. I, I expect, I know you got a new public works director, so I'm excited to get that connection made. But I think, you know, we've evaluated those maps that we got from you from back in the seventies, you know, and that with your hydraulic studies and your hydraulic plans and and we're gonna probably have to jump out of our lane a little bit and get involved with some of this, uh, some of this storm sewer work as well, because I think that's impacted a lot of what we're seeing on the roadways.
Uh, Chris brought up uh, at a previous meeting, gas lines. Have we considered everything that's under there that would be impacted? Is, is that something?
So when, I mean, I guess, not, not, when we're looking at it, I mean, when we're looking at this part of it, I guess we're um, I guess kind of assuming you guys have got, I mean, I know I already talked to Scott, I don't know if your gas is, that's a mid-American utility though. Ameren, is it Ameren here? Okay. But yeah, I mean.
I gave uh, the, gave, I think it was Nolan in part last time.
Yes, and now he's talking to him about projects that are actually, yeah, headed for construction, but on this analysis, I guess, I mean, it's probably.
Maybe perhaps not analysis, but at least coordination when we do choose for.
Oh, yeah, we've got a, we've got a, a very aggressive utility coordination program that we do, which you probably have seen with Nolan, because um, yeah, we get out, we try and get out in front of those, because utilities need the same convenience, I guess, of having time to engineer their shifts and changes or whatever. You guys have the right, I mean, with your franchise agreements, you got a right to have them move their stuff out of your way, but, but it's only right to give them time to engineer it.
I guess the coordination too would be so that we're not going through and then undoing the work that we just did.
Yeah.
We have the tendency to do that, you know, because we don't have that coordination, because the right hand is not on left hand, you know, and then we go in, we fix a road, it looks great, and now we got these patches in that road because of that coordination didn't take place, you know, from previous public works.
Yeah, that's, um, the optics of that are awful and the financial impacts are, are terrible. And I, yeah, when you have your own local utilities, you have a little bit more leverage on that, but, but um, usually your private utilities are, they wanna be good partners.
They, they are, and they do, and I've talked to them. They wanna be good partners, uh, you know, with us. But I think it's gonna take all of us in collaborative with CMT, with you guys, you know, with the Ameren and some of these utilities that we have to be able to work, you know, hand in hand to make sure that we're not going through and doing this work for the city that, I mean, for the longest time we've been wanting to do, and now we're showing you a little headway and then, and then have some things that just come about because we weren't planning correctly, you know. It's gonna take a lot of coordination between all parties.
Yes, that, and, yeah, and, and that takes, um, you gotta have some tenacity for that too, to get everybody to the table.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so here, now let me try and click. Yeah, I can do this. So, this is. Okay, so this one here, um, what, what we do when we put this spreadsheet together is go down and we um, you'll see like here. There, so. So they had thirty-six point eight three road miles, which is seventy, what, what would that be? That'd be right around seventy-three point six lane miles then that were in excellent condition. They came through in J- uh, Joliet Township and they did a, they did a bonding initiative and I think they resurfaced, I don't know, a, a large area back in twenty twenty-one, did a complete, you know, mill and overlay, dry resurfacing program. So that, that brought a whole lot of their roads up into that higher um, higher category. And I want to, uh, let's see, this is, this is that same thing I saved on a P B U S, so hang on, all right, I'm gonna try and. Everything, um, I had these, you have to trust me, I had these all organized on my uh, on my desktop and then it, oh, here. I'm sorry, I. I wanna bring up that.
The score, the scoring grade or?
Yeah, I wanna bring up it, like I say, it's pretty dry and that, but it'll give you an idea of how um, how detailed that gets. And um.
The pavement distress guide.
Uh, the score.
I think I just opened that, that was just that one sheet document, and it just um.
Oh, yeah.
I think maybe this, I don't know if that's. And now that I feel like I can move around here a little better, I'll see if I can. Gary, I emailed back to you, I think that I. Here, a bunch of them moved down here. I'll open this up and see if I can find it in this email real quick. I hope that's the one page document. Alright, yeah, this is. And this is not, this is the I dot version of it, that, um. Sorry about this. I don't know. I think I have. Gary, did I send that to you, I sent that to you last week or not? Or did I send that to you this afternoon?
I think we sent it in twice.
JD, if you can't find it, I think if it's something you can find, Gary, get your office and send to us.
I'll email it to you, I'll, I'll, um.
And, and, uh.
Which one are you, are you looking for, general guidelines for CRC pavement distress?
It should be five pages. Should be a five-page sheet.
Extracted pages?
No, it's, um. Here it is, I'm sorry. Here it is. So this is, um, so this is the A H K, these are the ones that talk about, th- this is where I said those different codes that they could put in there. And it talks about, you know, faint hour lack, collapsed pattern of joint pavement, small longitudinal cracks that are to connect their pavement edge in CRC. May have long transverse cracks. And then this goes through all the different types and then the level of the cracking distress. And again, to the trained inspectors, all this meets, you know, meets a certain level of deterioration to where you know whether it can be saved or whether it's past that point of recovery. So that's why in some of those examples, like that one neighborhood where I showed you where it's got all those different colors, is because some portions of that neighborhood probably, I'm on a limb here a little bit, but I'm gonna guess, some of them probably have some drainage problems that didn't get addressed. And then they tried to use that same blanket approach to everything. And that's what you end up with, is you end up with a neighborhood like that that probably was all developed at the same time with the same surface. But unfortunately, it didn't get maintained properly with the right method at the right time. So anyway, but this is that, it, it's five pages of just all this detail that they go through when they're doing that evaluation to, you know, put it into that right category. And it, you know, like I say, you'll, you'll have a couple block area, well, you see, they broke it down into a tenth of a mile in some cases because different segments of it, you know, were at a different, uh, different need level, so.
JD, when we get the final product, uh, from your company, when you complete the condition index and we see these scores, um, would you be able to help us quantify a, uh, an applied risk where we do see green, yellow, red, right? And we understand that that correlates to the condition, but let's say a yellow. Upper or lower, quantifying the risk in terms of time and dollars before it becomes red and triples in cost?
Yeah.
Like to help us guide discussion as we develop this concept of approach?
So I'll, I'll say, absolutely, I mean, we're gonna be here, we're gonna be an extension of your staff to help you evaluate all that. But, and like I say, not trying to be evasive on that, but it's, it's also gonna be requiring that same analysis from all your other infrastructure things, gonna drive the project to a, to its priority level. So, yeah, we're all gonna have to kinda roll our sleeves up and do that collectively, because, um, and like I say, cause you folks are the ones that are gonna have to answer to why something that looked like it was in worse condition, the optics of it, aren't gonna be driven in that first tier of priorities, because there's things going on underneath that people can't see that are gonna elevate something else above.
Sure.
So, um, so, yeah, I think we're all gonna have to, to be in this together.
Have that conversation.
Yep, and, and it's a whole different animal when you guys start talking about debt service, you know, and that, because that's making a commitment probably beyond your tenure and, you know, saddling somebody else with your decision, so you wanna make sure you've got the best information available when you're, when you're making those choices. So, yeah, yep, we're with you on that, so. I, I'll, um, I don't think I sent you this, so I'll, I apologize, I'll. No, and I named it, I, I named it distress, yeah, that's why I couldn't find it, so. So, okay.
What, just once again, uh, what does this product do?
So what we typically do is do these, I mean, when, when I was in Moline, trying to keep the cost as low as possible, we would use our field staff to do it. They're the most, you know, they're the ones that get trained on this, you know, when they do all their I dot training, they'll be coming in off their construction projects. And you like to do this when the cracks are at their widest, you know, so you want it cool weather, obviously you can't do it when snow is on the ground. But our, our staff would try and go out and do this when it's, you know, later part of the year, before there's snow on the ground. But like I say, when you can see that the stress cracks are at their widest and everything's as, as evident as possible. Um, we've already spent some time out here, like I say, canvassing the community, looking at some of these storm, uh, drainage issues, you know, and that, and other projects that we're doing. So we'll probably, we'll probably trying to do some of that analysis, like I say, we'll stay in our lane to some degree, but I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to understand some of this stormwater challenges that you guys are facing, just to understand best what to recommend for the roadway improvements. For some of these areas, and nothing wrong, I mean, some of these areas, you still got open ditches and culverts and that's fine, but, uh, cause it's a lot of money to put in a storm sewer network. And I've always said, you know, I know it's, it's cheaper sometimes to convey rather than control, but if you can control, you know, and that within reason, um, you know, there's some spots over there, I think I told you, Gary, on the other side, on the east side of the high school where you still have some roadways that are your responsibility. And I'm like, yeah, this is, this is a totally a great training ground for your staff to go out there and learn how to do, you know, some elevations and take, you know, and take care of some of that, and maybe, maybe some of your staff could get, you know, seasoned in how to do some of that drainage and grading stuff, you know, and that. And we can help them, you know, we can help them lay it out and, and do some of that and, and get you guys to where you can do more of that stuff in-house. And, um, so I guess, you know, we're gonna probably be looking at some of those other things right along with our pavement. But you can plan on this, like I say, starting that probably later this fall and going through, it'll, it'll go through the, probably the cold weather months and that and come back with you with a, with a report. What you typically wanna do is, like I say, bring all that together before you guys are making your budget decisions for this next season, because it's gonna, everything that we do is gonna have to be looked at collectively with your utility needs as well. So, and their season will be going on at that same time where they're having main breaks and they're having, you know, their utilities show their weak spots at the, at the same time where we're taking a look at the surface.
So PCI portion, final report's gonna have PCI, gonna have a storm sewer, it's gonna have, uh, CMT's water analysis?
Well, I, I know in my time of conversations with Scott, he's, he's working on it, but I, I can't speak for them.
Yeah, you can't, obviously, obviously, I'm not gonna ask you that, but.
But.
Do we have it all coordinated together? For, for the final file, yes, PCI, when do we get PCI?
Um, you, you give me a drop dead date like when you want it and I'll make sure you have it, but otherwise, I'm gonna work on it, like I say, as, as my staff comes in, I'm gonna be sending them right. As they come in from I dot, I'm gonna say, okay, take a day to catch your breath and head to Kiwanis, we're gonna start. What I do wanna tell you is that these things are, the subjectivity, and I put in there a couple times, the subjectivity comes from whoever's looking at it. So I always like that continuity, I want the same folks looking at that. So I wanna make sure that whoever's staffing this and coming out here is gonna be here from start to finish, so we make sure we got the same lens looking at it throughout.
Can we have PCI November third, we got a meeting here, city council on November tenth, that'll be having a time to feed in the packet?
Say that again.
November third?
You, you say you want the report by November third?
PCI. I mean, because I, I, I'm recognizing that this is a comprehensive product, where we question, that has elements of the condition index. Then we're going to look at subsurface condition of storm sewer and sanitary sewer. And then we're going to fold in finally for the action plan, Crawford Earth Utilities Water Distribution Analysis. So I did like, I'm just trying to make sure that we have a Gantt chart of phases so we can look, digest, move on to the next one, fold that in and, and methodically get there. So that's why I'm like, we got a meeting November tenth, it takes us a few days to get things into the packet. I'm just asking if November third is a achievable date?
I don't think for my part, I, I don't think I can, no.
Not for PCI?
Not for the staff that I wanna put on it.
Okay.
What's a realistic timeframe? You said, I mean, I, I don't wanna put anything unrealistic that is not gonna give us the best comprehensive report possible, but also don't want it to be next May, you know?
Um. I think I can get it to you, I.
December fifth?
I'll, I'll get it to, I'll get it to you in December. And I will, um, and I'll go back and, and, and put a staffing strategy together to make sure, um, maybe not, if I'm telling you that, I'll deliver it, I'll just, um.
Yeah, and, and recognize, we're, we're just talking about PCI, you know, which is, which is like, we agree, if that's driving, that's crack analysis, that's the, that's the surface count, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not, yeah, so please don't hear me try and box you in a corner. I'm just trying to lay out a schedule for us to hold ourselves to, um, that's, that's achievable.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Awesome. Great, right. Gary, will, will the public works, will they hire for the, will, will they be in, talk public scheduling, you know, it's not too.
Say that again?
Our public works, the guy who can hire the public works, will they be involved in scheduling with?
Yes.
About something like, I don't even know here in that, in that world, I don't even know here, that's all.
What, what date are you looking for in December, between, you know, for our first meeting on the eighth?
Yep, um, I'll do everything I can to have it to you here before you have that meeting on the eighth. I will, um, I'm gonna go back and, and meet with my staff and make sure that I can, um, and even if I, um, yeah, let me get back with you, I, yeah, I wanna.
If, if you don't feel comfortable committing, just like maybe at least give us a date by like the next meeting, so that we can.
Okay, let me, let me do that, cause here's, here's what happens, I may, I commit staff to I dot, I dot's got these projects going on, but when they're, um, they control their own schedule and they're contractors and, and if I don't get my staff back, when they tell me I'm gonna get them back, then I'm gonna be a little, I'm gonna be a little behind and I wanna, um, but I wanna give you the best staff I've got to do, to, to do this, you know, and like I say, to give us the best work product we can.
And it's gonna be the same.
What would you say to the tentative date and if something goes awry with getting your staff back, you can call us and we can reschedule that?
Okay.
Fair enough?
Yep.
Thank you, JD. Do you have any experience, I know there's been some talk as far as, uh, issuing bonds, do you have any experience in that as far as, uh, funding these projects? I know there's an expense involved with, with issuing bonds and I, I just wanna make sure that that is our best interest to go through that added expense of funding bonds if, if that is what we choose to do.
Yeah, that's, uh, what we would do is help you identify what, I can help you identify what projects would have that thirteen-year life that's bondable, um, because um, that's a requirement, you know, when you, when you wanna bond to public works projects, it's making sure it's got to use the life that, um, needs to require us to debt service. You're gonna wanna, you, you're gonna get a, you know, a bond agent that helps you navigate through that.
So any, any can, any work that we are going to pay for with a bond must have a thirteen-year life?
Yeah.
Did I hear that right?
The municipal bonds that I'm familiar with, we did, we had, you know, we had a myriad of different, um, we had twelve different Tiff districts in Moline. So I was always being asked to take a look at our public improvement projects, you know, as we would reject the pro forma of what we thought, you know, the incremental increase was gonna be in certain tips and then we would identify public works projects that we thought that we could use for that capture.
I mean, is that essentially like, uh, you know, only full depth efforts? Or like what, like what, what can we think about in our minds, uh, that, that would carry a thirteen-year life?
No, if you're gonna do, um, like if you would go through and do a, like a mill, maybe a, um, concrete stabilization, you know, and that, where they take and, and build up the, the subsurface, it, it's, um, it's science, I mean, they kinda do samples, put in a certain lot of concrete beneath, you know, and that. And then I, I've done it for some counties where we just do a, a chip seal over the top of that.
And that's thirteen years?
It'll, would you.
So they say?
When you put that cement stabilized subsurface, you get your, get your crown right, you get your shaping right, you get your ditch, ditches done and, uh, and that, and yeah, you can get a, you can get a thirteen-year life out of that with, with adequate payments. And so, but, but again, every, um, and I don't know enough about the different debt service departments as well. You know, what's, what would be a lot of, but I could, you know, we could bring the different projects to you, you know, in different areas if you could look at it. I don't know if these are, um, if you have areas that you're gonna be looking at or in a Tiff district or not either. But, but we'll help you with anything that you can provide, you know, any.
Appreciate it.
JD, that, from my perspective, thank you, that was really good, you answered a lot of the questions, I know we peppered you, but I appreciate you coming.
Yeah, Bill, and, yeah, and sorry, I guess, um, you know, we all kinda know in our heads sometimes how we're gonna go about different things, but, um, I know you folks need that reassurance, I guess, that, um, have that confidence in us, so.
That is very well said, cause we do need reassurance, cause we're speaking on behalf of the entire community, so we wanna make sure that we get it right.
But I think also on top of that, this is the hottest topic in Kiwanis, our roads and, and everything, you know, that, that goes with them. So when we're talking about this, we wanna do it right, you know, we wanna make sure that this council sets the precedent and does things right for future councils and doesn't, you know, like I said, paint them into a corner, uh, later on.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion items outside of, uh, the presentation that you guys have, any items you'd like to bring?
I, I guess I'll break the ice, that I'm not ready to vote on this. Um, I think we have heard an outstanding, uh, presentation on what we are going to base our plan off of. But in my personal opinion, um, we just hired a new public works director, we haven't had an opportunity to sit down. We don't know the concept of approach yet of how we're going to separate the funding streams and separate them into projects that require I dot approval, don't require I dot approval, what things are gonna come back from, uh, Hutchinson as bondable or not bondable. Um, we have not discussed any separation of operational level efforts, uh, or what, you know, I kinda like to call depot or major overhaul efforts of the more full depth and what's beneath the surface type of, uh, project scopes. I, and, and, and I don't wanna, I personally, I personally am not ready to vote because I. I, I'm kind of, I'm kind of for using this money, but using it the right way, and, and I'm just not confident that we know how we're gonna use it the right way yet. That's my opinion.
Well, I mean, by voting today, we're not saying that we're using it this exact way that, without having that plan in place today. We're basically voting today that we are going to put this in place to start collecting the taxes, to be able to have that funding source available for it, so for me, it's not about this, because that's gonna come later on. And we need to put all that comprehensive plan together, but by voting on it today, we at least start collecting the revenues that can go into that pot of money that we're gonna need to be able to use to fund that, and, and I agree with what you're saying, but I don't agree that we shouldn't vote on it today, because the ability to start collecting and, and imposing this right now has nothing to do with on what our plan is, that's, that's down the road, and this doesn't stipulate that we have to vote and come to a plan that, that is not put in place yet.
I agree, Chris.
I, 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 I don't, so I, I understand the logic, Pat, for sure, but I don't agree with it, because in, what I'm trying to say is, if we approve this and we're collecting money, the sense of urgency to make sure that the plan is locked down can potentially go away. But if we all don't vote for it, that's all I'm offering, if we don't yet, uh, consider this question via vote until we have a good plan, then we really hold ourselves ultimately accountable for making sure that that plan is discussed thoroughly and, and, and comes to the table.
I'm on the opposite side of it, if we vote today and we start collecting the money, it's gonna hold us to the fire, then we have to come up with a plan, make sure that it is something that we can, if we don't have it, then that thing, that, we just kick the can down the road further.
I feel, so I, I think you guys are speaking the same thing.
We are, it's just now versus later.
Coming at it from different.
It's, it's now versus later, and I think if we, we voted it now and start collecting those revenues now, it's gonna give us the ability to really force our hand to put a plan together, and we, we know what we're gonna use the money for.
Yeah, it says what we're gonna use the money.
Yeah, hundred percent.
We're gonna move forward, make a plan, whether we vote for this tonight or whether we table it again, we're, we're still gonna, you know, generate this plan and work on, on this plan, either way.
It's just collecting the revenues now versus down the road, and it's the ability to collect a little bit more revenue for it.
I think we've even talked about, uh, holding work sessions too, you know, to bring this about, so.
So your, your concern is that we've got money, or we're gonna start collecting this, but we don't have a, a path of how we're gonna spend the money and what we're gonna do. Until we get that path and that plan put together, that this, 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 and this, to be able to, to say, okay, this is what the money's gonna go to, you don't feel comfortable that we should vote and do anything until we have that put in place.
I don't feel comfortable, because I have not yet seen, I have not witnessed us create a plan that I have confidence.
How far away are we from finding this with the state to start collecting, before we lose our opportunity to the next round?
Today. I mean, that, you could have a special meeting, it's October first?
Yeah, it has to be filed.
So if we don't vote on it today by October first.
If you don't do it now.
You have to hold a special meeting.
And then if it doesn't take effect in January, which is to vote now or before October first, then the next opportunity to start collecting is in July. January and then July and then.
So if we vote today, when do we start collecting?
Uh, January first.
And if we wait, and then next is July?
Yeah, if you pass it next week or next December or, or March, it's still.
We won't be able to collect anything.
I, I appreciate where you're coming from, Adam, I, I don't agree with you on this, this matter. I personally am ready to vote.
I mean, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, Adam, I, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from. I completely understand that, that we don't have anything put in place, but I, I, I have confidence that we will have something put in place and start collecting revenues for this.
Joel Hossi would like to say something, he's got some experience, I'd like to hear what Joel has to say.
Well, when I was reading through the, the ordinance, I assume that this is a draft copy of the ordinance, and once you get through twelve wherethes and you read through it, I don't know how well people at Kiwanee understand what the municipal retail occupation taxes or the not, or the, um, service occupa- occupation tax. Basically, it reads whatever you set the one at, it's gonna be exactly the same at the other. But my concern is, once you get back here towards the, into the section two, it talks about a one percent tax, not a half a percent tax.
One percent is what the state allows?
Allows, but just, if this is a draft, if you were to vote on it as it is, you'd have to, and fix it accordingly before you get it all filed.
We only have a half a cent open. That's as high as we could go.
I just wanna make sure that everybody in the city understands that, like, it was set that you're now, you're gonna become the highest sales tax, one of the, close to the highest sales tax in the area. You're gonna be competing with Galesburg, Furia. Quad Cities is actually, I think Moline is actually seven and a half, if I remember right, or seven and a quarter, so.
Joel, you're right, so six and a quarter is baseline state. Then we have a half a percent for the county public safety. We have one full percent for school facility occupation and use tax, which is basically when you combine those, that's sales tax. And the city has a half a percent currently. So all we're, all we're discussing today is adding that last half a percent.
Just so people understand that, is my point.
Right, for sure.
And then the fact is, trying to get, rush it through to try to gain that six, six months of collection, by all means, make sure everything's correct, all language is correct, and then have a special meeting to do it, but just make sure that everybody in the city understands that, hey, when you go to Walmart, or you go here or there, buy something like a two by four or whatever, that you're gonna see in the area.
But it's not just the people at Kiwanee, it's anybody from outside communities.
I get it, everybody that's.
Yes, correct.
Buying stuff in all our stores and everything, so on, I get that, you know, how, the people that are coming.
But we wanna educate them on both sides, though, too, you know, not just saying the people at Kiwanee coming in, theirs is gonna go up.
They're driving down the roads and you're gonna use it towards fixed roads, I get it totally, I mean, I understand it, I was for doing the, the tax that we have the, uh, referendum on it about two years ago, I was for that, because there is a definite need, it's just, everybody needs to understand it.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Appreciate your input, thank you, Joel. You ready?
I'm ready.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sernovich.
I, I do not feel comfortable with where we're at in the planning phase to collect it at this time. I have not, um, witnessed anything in the past few years to make me feel comfortable in the planning, yet. I, I hope that we live up to this challenge and recognize, you know, what we're asking of, you know, the people that live in this town and the people that shop in this town. So, I, I would have liked to have voted yes, but at this point, I have to vote no.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Yes. Move on to the last item of the, uh, new business. Reconsideration of Bill number two five dash eight three ordinance granting a special use permit to Larry Neils for property located at three twenty four East Second Street. There's been a request to reconsider Bill twenty five eighty three that was presented to the council at the last meeting. This was a request for a special use permit by Larry Neils for property he owns at three twenty four East Second Street. If granted, Mr. Neils will be allowed to park currently owned equipment on his property, so long as the equipment is current with city ordinances. There is also stipulation that would allow Mr. Neils to store scrap on trailers on the property on a temporary basis, and no scrap is to be stored on the ground. We'll have a motion, so moved.
Second.
End discussion.
From a technical standpoint, the motion has to be made by the prevailing party, which since it didn't pass, it would be someone that.
Okay, well, I, I move.
But then.
Okay, listen. Fair.
Pardon me?
Nope, I, oh, fair.
End discussion.
So the discussion, and why I asked to bring it back up for reconsideration, I felt really, um, poorly that we sent Mr. Neils away with nothing in hand and an inability to even park his vehicles there. Um, I still stand by my personal, uh, interpretation of, you know, section one fourteen and what scrap, what is a scrap yard and not a scrap yard, and what, you know, would need to be screened and or not screened, and what zoning that is allowed into or not. So, um, I would like to offer or move or, you know, whatever words to strike out, um, the, or move for us to consider this special use permit for Mr. Neils and this address uh, as written, however, with the, uh, stipulations struck that deal with approvals and authorizations for use. So I'd like to take one step back from that. Um, since Chris wasn't here at the last meeting, um, I still fully support it as written, but I would like to hear your thoughts.
So looking at this, um, and taking into consideration of, of what the planning commission, they voted five in favor, so you have that to start with, but looking at some of the other things that we have done in the past, where we have had Hodges, where they store vehicles, scrap, we have asked them to, uh, put a fence in there, can't have anything over the fence. Um, I forget the gentleman on, um, Main Street. Mr. Barnes, same thing, he was storing vehicles and stuff there, and we had asked him to fence it off. So what is the difference between this here with vehicles and scrap, that we are not asking him a couple blocks from our city hall to fence it off?
Big difference that I see is the stipulation is a temporary situation where he's not allowed to keep it there permanently. It's temporary compared to like Hodges, it's more of a permanent situation, the, they're having, storing vehicles there that aren't necessarily leaving. They're keeping them there for longer periods of time, and the, the same holds true with, uh, Mr. Barnes is on North Main Street.
So the scrap, um, piece.
Well, that's gonna be temporary, but it will be constant temporary.
Hold on, it's cargo.
Okay.
It's on a trailer, it's in a truck.
Never allowed to store it on the ground.
It's never leaving the, the truck or the trailer.
Okay, but that's still, this, uh, understandable.
In the Coast Guard, we call the C lawyer, where you're trying to kid around with regulation or a stipulation based on, uh, semantics.
Yeah.
So.
I'm just saying that that's how we've interpreted it.
Yeah, and I would like to hear from Mr. Neils, I'm, I'm, I wasn't here last council, and obviously, it was two to two. So I'd like to hear, you know, um, what, what you're doing from a standpoint a- and, you know, anything behind it that you could help.
Okay. I've been parking my trailer on this property for over ten years.
Yeah.
Older people are allowed to come along, put a piece of metal wherever on a trailer. And I check it daily to make sure there's nothing sitting on the ground, and it usually gets dumped once a week. A lot of these older gentlemen do not wanna go into the junkyard due to the batteries, nails, and scrap all over that goes into your tires. A lot of people don't wanna drive to a scrapyard just to drop off a piece of paint. I've had eight people, at least, since last counting them, come by and put stuff in my truck, and then I take my truck over my trailer, just because they don't wanna park there. And it is so convenient for the older people just to come by, put on my trailer, and go down to it.
So you said you've been doing this for ten years, why is this just coming out, now it's a special use order?
Because I just bought the property and they required me to have a special outdoor parking permit.
So what were you doing before, renting it or leasing the space, or who owned it before?
I was just using space from the Boy Scouts and I would make donations to them.
Okay, so somebody else on the property?
Yes.
And the change of hands is what's?
What brought it all up.
There was also a complaint made, and our code enforcement team wrote it up as a violation for scrapping in an area that was not zoned or permitted. So part of what you didn't, if we're gonna rehash this whole thing, which I wasn't aware that we were going to, so in, in chapter one fourteen of title, I forget, it talks about the definitions, and this is what I brought up. So, and it does not necessarily have a stipulation of timeline, there's no timeline element to this lawful definition of what is a scrap yard, what is it not. If you're dealing in it and you're transacting at that property regularly, it's a, it's what's defined as a junkyard here. Like I said, I'm not trying to characterize your property as a, you know, junkie, because it's, it's, I do agree, you've done a lot of work to, to improve its.
I have noticed that, actually.
But here in our city codes, I'm just trying to hold us accountable to our defined codes, and if we separate for this case, if someone that doesn't keep it as clean sets up shop right next to it, how are we going to handle that and maintain integrity?
If we set a precedent.
Exactly, exactly, oh.
Well, one of the things I do wanna point out that was also brought up here, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Neils, but the original complainant had actually withdrawn that complaint after reviewing the stipulations that were proposed. But it was actually to his satisfaction what, what was brought forward on that. And I think, at least from a legal interpretation standpoint, the characterization of cargo and how that is utilized, and the threat that that poses to the environment, is different in scale for one, but also in the risk to the immediate environment for that kind of an operation as compared to a full blown scrap yard. I think there's enough distinction there from a legal standpoint, that we're not just creating ground to legislate around a particular restriction in that fashion, if that makes sense.
And also, to be fair, I think in their investigation, uh, when they checked into these complaints, they did not find any violations. Correct me if I'm wrong, Keith.
Actually, he wrote a violation. I mean, that was, that was on the code, uh, three meetings ago. I, I'll bring that back up too, nonetheless, the other thing that I offered and requested is that we, if, if we don't disagree, or if we, excuse me, don't agree here, I, it was my assessment that I don't know that this was sufficiently or entirely considered at the planning meeting to send them down and get their opinion on what chapter one fourteen defines. Sorry, go ahead, Keith.
So, uh, what you were referring to there was the, uh, the complaint of the scrap blowing off of the trailers and on neighboring property, and once I'd received that complaint, here again, I think I even commented in my notes, it's not saying it didn't happen, but I tried to frequent that rather several times and looked for verification of it, and I, I couldn't verify that that was actually happening. Saying it wasn't, but I didn't personally see it.
That's what I was referring to.
Yep. But did you write it up or not?
I, I wrote it up as a violation for the truck and trailer storage yard, there's some history to it, if you went back and read the whole memorandum. Uh, I tried to find out if the Boy Scouts had a special use or how long they had it. Um, you know, one could say that it possibly had a lawful non-conforming use. Why it wasn't enforced in the past from previous administration, I don't have an answer for that, it was just there. And when it changed hands, we got the complaint, that's when I thought, I talked to the city manager about it, and we thought, okay, put a special use on it, put stipulations in there, um, so we can make sure that it doesn't become something more than it is. That we felt the stipulation gives us something to say, okay, Mr. Neils, we feel you're in violation here. If you don't correct this, we're gonna put you back in front of the planning mission council for, for revoking it, um, the manager and I.
So.
Kind of agree on that.
Case twenty, case two five zero four six four on K State seven thirty, open active, Lawrence Neils, three twenty four East Second Street, land use violation, operating a scrapping recycling operation.
Yeah, but that was my initial notice after speaking with the city attorney on it. We tried to figure out what best suits the situation. Um, so, one could say, are, is he, is he, is he, uh, conducting a, uh, consumer metal recycling facility or what exactly it was, and then after further discussion, so that, those notices are, aren't, what do I say, de-filed, you know, they.
Okay, is he collecting it there, is it a center to collect and receive scrap?
There was no real transaction taken there, correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, we, we discussed it, because there wasn't actual transaction. There was no real transaction taken there, correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, we we discussed it because there wasn't actual transaction.
Dropping it off like?
Yes.
Just people dropping it off. So that's why, that's why we did.
Is it stored there?
Only for the length of the time before it's dropped off. It's not that it's intended to stick there permanently being. And it's not that he's collecting X dollars from every single person that's dropping something off him, that's why I didn't treat it as transactional.
I can assure you that uh no scrap is intended to stay at the scrapyard permanently. It's intended to stay there until it's.
Well, that's true, that's true.
I mean, so, you know, there's no timeline element here is what I'm trying to point out. There's no element in this law or in this code, I should say more clearly, at a time. It's if it's stored there routinely.
The difference is that it is strapped down to a trailer in that fashion. That is what is differentiating this from the operation of a scrapyard in my mind.
So it is stored as cargo?
Yes.
How often is it, if I was to drop some off today, do you strap it that same day or how does that work?
It'll probably be scrapped within probably three to four days.
Okay.
You'd be amazed how fast that trailer will fill up from empty.
So who straps it down though, like it, do you have it unstrapped?
I live across the street, I I check it every day.
Okay, so somebody drops some off?
I see, I walk over, I make sure it's secure.
So there's no stipulation in there as far as the timeline?
No, it could be there two days, it could be there more five days.
I would like to add a stipulation that it be removed, any scrap be removed at least weekly.
Yes, I do that for my account.
I'm just making up case by case rules. I I I like, I think if we're gonna change that, why don't we send it back down to the planning commission and use them if we don't agree? And and rework our codes to be work within our intent. We have like ten stipulations on this thing.
Nine.
Nine.
If we add that one, that's true.
And and they're subjective, it says to keep it clean and orderly, who's going to police that or who's going to monitor that? These things are difficult to to, I, if we asked you, Keith, could you go and monitor whether or not it's clean and orderly? And what, what objective approach would you use to say whether it is or isn't?
I think Keith would go by it all the time.
Well, I know, I know, I know, but I'm saying.
We kind of comply for almost everything we do.
Not really, but eight inches for grass, right? It's eight inches, eight inches for grass.
Yeah, this is true.
Those are from where? Sea level?
Base elevation. Okay, I I've said my piece, I so.
And and to your suggestion, Mr. Mayor, I I believe in the past you have stricken stipulations or added stipulations than in the past as well at your level.
And it's not uncommon for us to have stipulations on our special use.
No, we do it all the time.
I mean, it's it's a special use, you know, by definition, something that's out of.
Do you know that there's a list of special uses that are authorized for V three? And it says for operable automobile storage, it does not say for scrap storage. So we are not following our codes, John.
Now, now, hold on, hold on, so we're getting into the whole thing. Our ci- uh city attorney classifies that as cargo.
Yes, yeah, I agree, but still the the listed special use authorization doesn't say for cargo, it says for operable vehicles.
Can those vehicles have cargo? I I'm not, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify because I want to understand. So if they're operable vehicles, would they be allowed to have cargo in that case?
So once again, it like folding in all these different elements, elements, you know, cargo this, cargo that. I I personally see an intention in our code to hide scrap from majorly trafficked thoroughfares. In our code one fourteen, it says that scrapyards that are within a thousand feet that of of any roadway must be screened and must be restricted to M one properties. And so here we are in a B three that's got nonconforming residential around it on a, on a state highway. And we're going to authorize scrap, routine scrap operation without a screen. I don't believe that that's in either the intent, the spirit or letter of our codes. That's all I'm trying to articulate here, so I'll let that rest.
And I don't believe that's a scrapyard.
It's scrap operations then, I mean, if 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 you all get to twist words, I I get to say it's a scrap operation. So.
What was the stipulation you wanted, Dan Mayor?
I get taken within five days.
Pardon me, Chris?
Except that it it gets removed within five days, those trailers get, right, that was stipulation said.
A week, a five days.
Or a week, five days, yeah, I don't know if we're talking five business days.
I can't put.
I live in five, five days to me is five business days.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's funny, I mean, I don't think Larry'd have a problem with that, would you?
No, sir.
That seem amendable to everyone?
The question I have for Larry, and I'm listening to all you guys, I'm taking this in, you know, Larry, how how hard would it be for you to get something to screen this off i- if we gave you a timeframe to do that? And would it be something that would be not feasible uh to do for funding because?
Funding mine would be almost impossible.
Okay.
You're looking at what, eight foot fence, a hundred fifty foot long, which.
You're using a hundred fifty foot for?
That's the property.
No, I'm not talking about the property, just your, where your stuff is. You know, you got your foot, three trailers, a truck, I forgot, somewhere in here.
Still a man close to a hundred foot.
One pickup, one dump and three flatbed trailers.
There was also a concern with screening being there for emergency vehicles, line of sight.
Yeah, one of those brought up last week, Chris, Chief Kudjowski had a problem with being able to see emergency vehicles coming in and out of the.
And that wa- that was discussed at the planning mission level.
Yeah. I mean, I see everyone's point, I mean, Adam, I see your point.
It would be difficult to put screening up too because it's all concrete and you'd have to.
Core drill, yeah, through the concrete pad, I get it, um, I I the hard thing for me is I look at it from a standpoint of whether they're permanent or not, that trailer's still gonna always look and appear full, right? Whether you take that, it's gonna get full back, fill back up, you know? It's a constant, so whether it's like Hodges or anywhere else, it's still gonna appear that that trailer's still full right there, you know? I I mean.
Not all.
It it it's going to fill up, you're gonna remove it and a day or two it's gonna sit and it's gonna fill back up and it's gonna, you know, no different than Hodges pulling a car in and and having that. But I, you know, I also understand that, you know, this is a extremely difficult case here because we have two valid points, that's cargo, it's not, you know, coming from our legal expert and that's not me. But, yeah.
I can't add a stipulation, so if anybody'd like to add a stipulation on what I suggested, we have to rescind.
Uh, you can amend.
Amend, okay, but that's up to you guys if you want to amend my suggestion or vote as is and.
Yes, I'd like to amend to add the stipulation that the scrap is removed within five business days, is that what we're talking about?
So is everything on your trailers tarped right now?
The trailer's not there, it's been removed.
Okay, so if it was.
On one of my other properties.
Gotcha, if it was there daily, is it tarped?
It's not tarped, no, strapped down.
Okay.
Is there an option to have people drop off at one of your other properties?
Most people drive, most people drive by Seventh Street rather than going off to the north end of town.
Sure, so I mean, but I guess, you know, why, is is it not possible to have a compromise here and store the vehicles there and they're special use and do your scrap at the north end of town? I understand it's an inconvenience, but the service impact is the same.
Yeah, I can do that, but I'm, I still have a lot of people that want to bring stuff over here that I'm gonna reload and take it back across town. I had two gentlemen today drop off stuff, went in the back of my pickup truck because my trailer was not there.
But I think over time, if you work with them to know where to drop it off, they should know that it's the north end of town, not right there, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, I want to work with you and be, you know, work within everything and I think if we can find a compromise, something like that, I think that might work. You know, would you be agreeant to that?
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, are those other properties residential, commercial?
Residential, that's why I put on the visiting property.
Then that's the same.
So that's not gonna work, unless you want to come back again in a couple of weeks and start over.
Keith, can you, can you uh read to us again what the purposes for a special use permit are?
I'm troubled with that.
What are the reasons for a special use permit, what are the purposes, what should we be considering? It was in the last packet, I'm trying to find it in the codes. But it's for, it's for the betterment of the town, it's for the betterment of uh, what, there's like four or five different stipulations of why we uh pursue and approve special use permits. It's not for convenience is what I'm trying to.
Right, I think Keith might be trying to look it up right now, I don't know.
In the packet exactly like why we have?
Uh, it has before, he put, he puts it in there. It might be in the um, in the uh planning commission minutes then.
I know in zoning areas we we have that, there's facilities for zoning areas, but that's different commission. Says uh that the proposed use at a particular location requested is necessary or desirable to provide a service or a facility which is in the interest of public convenience and will contribute to the general welfare of the neighborhood or community. As such, use will not under the circumstances or of the particular case be, sorry, I don't have any glasses yet, my my perception has changed. So I'm struggling here, um, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals or general wa- welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity or interest to property values or improvements in the vicinity. And that the proposed use will comply with regulations and conditions specified in this chapter for such use and will with the stipulations and conditions made a part of the authorization granted by the council. Thank you. We have any glasses in a couple of these?
We have a motion on the floor with a amendment that scrap be removed within five business days. Anything, anybody else would like to add before we go to vote? Please call the roll.
I have a second on the amendment.
Okay. Second. Now please call the roll.
You're just voting on the amendment, Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Okay, and then are we ready to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, um, for the special use permit as written with the additional amendment. Councilmember Cernovich.
No.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. That concludes our agenda items, we will move on to council communications. Uh, Councilman Colomer, it's your turn to go first.
I don't have anything tonight, it's been a long night, so we're, we'll keep it short and simple and we still got more to go.
Councilman Cernovich.
I want to say uh thank you for the opportunity to attend the Illinois Municipal League this past uh week. It was extremely informative, uh lots of opportunities to see how other municipalities are doing things around the state uh as well as get some good information uh from other vendors and expo. One person that I did get to meet was uh Mr. Nick Nelson from Jacob and Klein, our TIF attorney. Um, wealth of knowledge, wealth of experience. Uh, he has not been up here and he really couldn't tell me when the last time uh he came up to uh, to speak with us about our strategies. We have discussed before about what we want to do as a council and as a, and as a community. Uh, he offered to come up, so I'd like to kind of put out there a formal request that we take him up on that offer.
Yeah, I would agree.
We can make that happen.
Awesome, where's the other?
Bloomington, I think he said.
Well, let me ask you this, Adam, did you get a chance to go watch Mike Singletary speak?
Oh my gosh, can we say that that was powerful, powerful, it was amazing, that was.
I I regret that I was not able to go because I really wanted to hear him speak, but uh.
If if you ever get a chance, do not miss it again.
I I did get to hear Joe Theismann a few years ago and that was, that was, yeah, awesome speaker.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Baker.
Yeah, I did, I was at the conference, great, um. I have a lot of questions, so learn, um, but um, Keith, Keith, I have a question for you, a resident wanted to ask you, seven oh four South Chestnut Street. I think lived down by me here, that resident has stuff to resell outside, like a yard sale, it's been out there for a whole week. You know, is that at all, seven oh four South Chestnut Street?
Seven oh four South Chestnut? Blue House.
That is, you've not come across the mail on it.
But they said, they said that there's stuff out there all week long and they can sell, sell like a garage sale. I saw a picture today, the stuff's still outside, furniture items and, I saw, I'll bring it to you.
Okay, let's check it out, okay.
Yeah, I don't go by there on a regular basis, but I did see stuff out there the other day, but I say I usually go over to Tremont Street. When I'm headed north, so.
Yeah, you have somewhere south, seven.
Blue House, yep, yeah, Blue House, yeah.
Councilman Comnic.
Um, I don't have much, just uh keep supporting our community events out there. You know, we got October coming up, so we have Bakersville coming up and then um Channing Pumpkin Festival too, so, you know, there's stuff to do out there. I know, um, I was out of town all weekend, but I saw Goodshead, a little event, like it was pretty well intended, so. That's all I got.
I have a few things, uh, first, I would like to offer condolences to city employee, uh, Dan Holshold and his family. Dan's father passed away this, this past Sunday and I and the entire city is very sorry for his loss. And congratulations to the Anawan Weatherfield Junior High Girls Softball Team. They competed at the IESA State Tournament this past weekend and came away with a fourth place trophy. So, you know, each year, you know, thousands of school aged uh athletes dream of competing at the state level and it's only a very small percentage that actually get the opportunity. So congratulations to all the girls and the coaches on a fantastic season. And then also this past weekend, the Kiwanee High School Marching Band took first place in in class two A at the Grey Ghost Classic in Chillicothe. I have not seen it personally, but I've heard this is a very large competition and not easy to win, so it's, it's nice to see the band continuing with. So it's, it's nice to see the band continuing with their winning ways and congratulations to them. And, uh, this coming Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from four to eleven P M, the annual Hispanic Heritage Celebration will take place. They always have great food, vendors and booths, as well as some very good entertainment. It's well worth a trip, uh, to downtown Kiwanee for this event. And just to kind of expand on, uh, you know, Mike brought up, uh, Bakersville, that is, uh, Saturday, October fourth, from seven P M to midnight. So I think everybody that, uh, goes to that, both young and old, have a good time, so I hope, uh, as many people make it to these events as possible. And, uh, let's see, I believe you, uh, have no announcements, so we have a motion to adjourn to go into closed session.
移到.
Second. Regular meeting is now adjourned, so please be safe.